Council, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. For those in attendance, if you wish to speak during a public hearing or the citizens' comment period, please sign up on one of the sheets in the back of chambers. Mr. Lee, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Item three is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. And do I have a second?
I'll do that.
And thank you so much, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda passes five to zero. Item four is matters from mayor. Today marks the 22nd anniversary of the nine eleven attacks, and I would like us to join together for a brief moment of silence to honor the memory of those who lost their lives that day. Thank you so much. July 26 was National Systems Administration Day. For scheduling reasons, we did miss the occasion to recognize our information technology staff, but we want to take an opportunity to do that tonight. So on behalf of city council and staff, we say thank you to our IT department for keeping the technology in the city running and operating smoothly. Every department and almost every employee uses information technology in some form, and our IT department manages to keep everything operating with seven full-time employees. Their responsibilities include supporting our various networks, servers, software, printers, desktop, and mobile devices. The IT department even supports the broadcast of these meetings. We are grateful for our team and thank you for the fabulous job you do. Item five is matters from city council members.
I have a couple of things real quick. Last Friday, Councilman Allen, Lee, Mayor Williams, and myself attended the breakfast. Give us an update on Blue Ridge Community College hosted, well, was led by Dr. Downey, who really kind of gave us an insight on all the new updates and everything going on at our local community college, of which I am proud to have a diploma hanging on the wall from as part of my education path. And I highly, they offer tours to anyone, so I would highly encourage anyone to go up and look and see what our community college in our area, what a great job Dr. Downey and his staff does up there, and go up there and take a tour and look around just to see exactly what a jewel that is for our area. The other thing, Councilman Allen and myself was at the fire station this morning bright and early, along with some of our city staff, for the nine eleven memorial, the remembrance they had. It was short and sweet, but it really drives home about how nine eleven is not the only day that we need to respect and understand the dangerous job that our first responders do. And I would just like to, you know, always, every day, say thank you to our law enforcement, our fire, our rescue, all of our first responders and all, so not just today, but every day.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anybody else? No? Item six is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Some.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The pass is five to zero. Item seven is to consider adopting a resolution establishing the rate of personal property tax relief for the 2023 tax year. Mr. Hamm?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor Williams. This effort dates back to 2004 and 2005, when the General Assembly enacted legislation that changed significantly the manner in which localities administer the personal property tax. That's commonly known as the car tax. In that year, they established the Personal Property Tax Relief Program, or PPTRA. That legislation requires that city councils and other locally elected bodies establish each year by resolution a rate of relief for qualifying vehicles. For the 2023 tax year, the Commissioner of Revenue has calculated that the rate of relief, excuse me, rate of relief will be thirty-one and a half percent. The reduction in percentage is attributable to the appreciation and valuation of vehicles due to buying, selling, and trading vehicles and to the increased number of vehicles on the tax roll. Last year, the rate of relief was thirty-eight percent. The amount of personal property tax relief distributed to each locality is determined by the General Assembly. The City of Waynesboro receives a little bit more than $1.7 million annually, but as the tax roll, the number of vehicles, the value of vehicles in locality increases, obviously, that relief doesn't go as far, and thus, the declining percentage of relief afforded to car owners in the city. So this evening, the council is asked to adopt the resolution establishing the rate of relief at thirty-one and a half percent for the 2023 tax year. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hamm? No? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution establishing the rate of relief at thirty-one and a half percent?
Some moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hamm. Item eight is to consider a resolution of official intent to reimburse expenditures with the proceeds from a borrowing. I'd like to call on our Assistant City Manager for Finance, Mr. Cameron McCormick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, members of council. So the city is currently in the process of applying for funds from the Virginia Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund. If the city has awarded these funds and proceeds with a debt issuance, the attached resolution would allow the city to reimburse itself for expenses related to the project incurred prior to the debt issuance. The resolution does not obligate the city to reimburse itself from the proceeds, so the city can make the choice to fund those with cash or to reimburse them, and it does not, it does not require the city to actually borrow the funds. This is just simply in the case that we get to a point through the Virginia Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund that we get the, we are approved for the loan, and the forgiveness is such that it's enticing enough that we decide we want to take it. This would allow us to take anything that we spend between today and that point and apply it against that loan fund.
And are there any questions for Mr. McCormick? No? Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution of official intent to reimburse?
I'd like to have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that resolution passes five to zero. Item nine is to hold a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance amending the City Code Section 98-7.2.5 Notice in Public Hearing of the City's Zoning and Ordinance 74-38. Public notice prior to preliminary plat review of the subdivision. This is a zoning text amendment that brings the City Code into conformity with recent changes to the Code of Virginia. Ms. Tate?
So as was discussed at your meeting two weeks ago, the city's zoning and subdivision ordinance contains information about public notice requirements, and this applies to certain proposed actions related to land use, and they're based on the Virginia Code Section 152-2204. And during the 2023 Virginia General Assembly session, 15.2-2204 was changed affecting when certain public noticing requirements needed to take place. Because of that change, it necessitated an update to the city's zoning ordinance, Section 98-7.2.5, which is notice in public hearings, and then also our subdivision ordinance, Section 74-38, which is public notices prior to preliminary plat review. So the amendments essentially just reference state code, so that in the future, if state code were to change again, we would not have to change it in our ordinance. The reason we're having to do it this time is because it actually detailed what state code said, rather than just referencing the number, so when it changed, we had to amend our ordinance, and this is for a public hearing this evening.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Tate? Okay. I hereby open the public hearing. Mr. Hamm?
No one has signed up to speak.
I hereby close the public hearing. This ordinance was introduced, seconded, and discussed at the previous meeting, and unless there are additional discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor of the ordinance amending City Code Section 98-7.2.5 Notice in Public Hearing of the City's Zoning Ordinance 74-38, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that ordinance passes five to zero. Moving on to item 10, and that's to hold a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 98, Article II, General Zoning District, Section 98-2.6.4 of the Code of the City of Waynesboro. This is the zoning text amendment that would remove language in Part C that states exempt in the CB district multi-family building parcel, parcels, and upper-story residential units in non-residential districts shall not exceed a density of eight units per acre. Ms. Tate?
So the next two public hearings scheduled are kind of submitted as a package, both requested by the applicant. So the first is the zoning text amendment, which would essentially then allow the conditional use permit request that follows. So the nature of the request is that the applicant requested an amendment to Section 98-2.6.4, and those are our residential area and dimensional standards in our non-residential districts. Specifically, the request was to remove the density limitation of eight units per acre. The applicant noted that that was restrictive and really didn't allow a site to be developed to its fullest potential. Multi-family buildings in certain non-residential districts are permitted by conditional use permit, and those are in our local business, our highway business, mixed business, and central business districts. Just for clarification of the fullness of that ordinance, we also allow upper-story residential permitted by right in most non-residential districts, and then by a CUP in our light industrial district. So the section proposed for amendment regulates those area and dimensional standards that are associated with those residential uses in non-residential districts. These four tenets of the ordinance regulate those standards. So you can see that first is related to the dimensional standards for duplexes, multiplexes, single-family detached, two-family houses, and corner lots in the RG5 district. It also notes that for townhouses and multi-family building uses that are going to be established through a conditional use permit review process, that in the highway business and commercial business districts, the townhouse or multi-family buildings need to have a parcel of at least 20,000 square feet. The section that's proposing to change is C, which discusses the multi-family buildings and upper-story residential units in non-residential districts and currently limits them to eight units an acre. And then lastly, the other standard that would remain the same is that upper-story residential is permitted on the upper floors of a non-residential building and would comply with the standards of that principal building. So this just shows in red, the proposed change would be to strike that density restriction. For zoning text amendments, the approval criteria that should be looked at reviews whether the amendment is consistent with good zoning practice. The public necessity convenience and general welfare is served by that text amendment. You also evaluate the extent to which the proposed text amendment is consistent with your comprehensive plan and the remainder of your zoning chapter, the extent to which the proposed text amendment, you know, may represent a new duck, new idea, or something not considered in the existing ordinance, or a revision necessitated by changing circumstances over time, whether or not the proposed text amendment corrects an error in the chapter, and then also, as was previously discussed, whether or not the proposed amendment advises the chapter to comply with state or federal changes. So as discussed, the amendment removes the density limitation but leaves the other requirements intact. When I presented two weeks ago, kind of a really good way of understanding it is that the text amendment just allows staff to accept applications for higher-density residential projects in non-residential districts, whereas before, with the eight-unit, an acre limitation, we wouldn't be able to accept those applications and bring them to you and kind of vet them through the public process. So this amendment is allowing that to be done. So on a case-by-case basis, depending on the very specific location, the transportation network, the differing circumstances that may arise at the time, it allows you to evaluate whether a higher-density residential use makes sense in a non-residential zone district. The Planning Commission did hold their public hearing, and they recommended approval. Our staff is also recommending approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have specific to the text amendment, and we can hold that public hearing and then move into the specific conditional use permit request.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Okay, thanks. I hereby open the public hearing.
So no one has signed up to speak. I will note that the applicant is here this evening. It may be that they would prefer to speak under the actual conditional use hearing, so no one else has signed up to speak.
We'll put you on the spot. Okay. I hereby close the public hearing. Okay, this ordinance was introduced, seconded, and discussed at the previous meeting, and unless there is additional discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor of the ordinance amending City Code Chapter 98, Article II, General Zoning District, Section 98-2.6.4 of the Code of the City of Waynesboro, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the ordinance passes five to zero. That brings us to item 11, and that's to hold a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance granting a conditional use permit allowing multi-family residential in the HB Highway Business District at 651 Town Center Drive Tax Map Parcel 60-1-56B and 150 P. Buckley Moss Drive Tax Map Parcel Number 59-1-1. Ms. Tate?
So this is for the specific conditional use permit request at 651 Town Center Drive and a portion of 150 P. Buckley Moss Drive. You can see the location at that star in red and kind of a zoomed-in area. The blue outlines those two parcels that would be included with the conditional use permit request. Conditional use permits allow for a case-by-case review of uses which may be but are not always compatible with neighboring uses. So in determining or evaluating a conditional use permit request, staff looks at whether or not it's consistent with good zoning practice, that it would be no more adverse to health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the area than the uses that are generally permitted, and then no more detrimental economically or otherwise to those improvements and property This aerial shows the uses and existing development, so the subject parcels are outlined in red. You have some single-family residential across the street, then certainly a significant amount of commercial and business and restaurant development, retail, and then you also have some single-family residential, which is actually in the neighboring Augusta County to the property. So the comprehensive plan does identify this area for commercial retail as it has kind of developed over time. I will note that the comprehensive plan also encourages more compact residential development and specifically states that that development should be close to areas of intense activity. So multi-family development is reasonable, given the proximity to transit, shopping, public transportation, and other amenities in the area. So as we just discussed in Section 98-2.6.4, it sets the residential and dimensional standards in non-residential districts. The subject parcels do meet the minimum lot requirement of 20,000 square feet. You can see that they are close to a little over 11 acres. It did exceed the previous density requirement of no more than eight units an acre. The applicant's concept plan, which I'll show you in a moment, proposes five multi-family buildings at that location with a total of 252 units, and a proposed condition of the permit would limit that development to 252 units. This provides the general concept and general layout. You can see the five different multi-family buildings. You can also see with the dashed lines, the three separate out parcels, which would be for business development, so the property is still staying zoned highway business, so the conditional use permit would really only apply to the portion of the property where residential development is proposed. You can also see the surrounding landscaping that would be required per our zoning ordinance. They have included a clubhouse and pool as amenities for the residences, and one of the conditions of the permit, if approved, would be that the property would be developed in general conformance with this plan. Another condition is also related to the height and the kind of schematic rendering that was submitted, and so this is made part of the application and referenced with the conditions that shows kind of the building elevations and general design. So the proposal is for 252 units on roughly 11.15 acre parcel once it's subdivided. So the 252 units, we will note, is approximately 23 units per acre. That is a little bit more than the maximum allowed in our multi-family zoning, which is 20 units an acre, but when discussed with the applicant, rather than trying to reach that number by kind of playing with the parcel lines, it seemed like it made the most sense to kind of consider that property as a whole, that it will have mixed-use development on it, there will be business parcels, and there will be residential, but just noting that for the specific parcel that is planned for residential development, it'll be roughly 23 units an acre. Applicant has proposed that the development would be limited to the 252 units and that the development would be in general conformance with the concept plan and with the architectural stylings and materials that were shown on the building elevations. So to discuss the transportation a bit, the concept plan does show one main entrance to the development from Town Center Drive, and I would like to note that Town Center Drive is a private road. And then there were, according to the concept plan, two additional entrances. I did provide some additional notes in red because the original, two weeks ago, when you heard the application, the concept plan did show a right-in, right-out at Town Center Drive before the full access that would be farther into the property, and then also a right-in, left-in, right-out on Rossar Avenue. The applicant has met with VDOT since then to discuss that right-in, right-out that the concept plan shows, and VDOT has expressed a desire to make that originally conceptualized entrance a full-access entrance, and really, that would be determined at site plan review, which it says in the current conditions, that even though it will be developed in general conformance with this plan, the entrances, you know, take a bit more time, a bit more evaluation from different agencies, and that this isn't, approval of this would not be approval of the entrances. So VDOT did note that their recommendation for that full-access entrance would really be contingent on timing and queuing analysis of the existing signal, but they felt that it was generally safer to direct the traffic to a signalized intersection. In addition, VDOT did note that the applicant would need to complete a turn lane analysis for their entrance on Route 340, so we don't have any of that today. Obviously, that would happen with site plan review, but just wanted to note that that has been a change in some discussions that the applicant and VDOT have had since we presented on the project two weeks ago. This just shows those entrances, and so you'll note that the one that's, you know, comes first in Town Center Drive, and the concept plan is shown as a right-in, right-out, but may, based on the recommendation from VDOT, be more of a full-access entrance at that It's also noted that the development would increase pedestrian traffic in the town center area, certainly as individuals living in those apartments would want to get to shopping, restaurants, the transit stop, the carpool lot. A lot of the area in that commercial district does have sidewalk infrastructure. The applicant proposed a crosswalk on the site plan, subject to permission from town center owner, since that is a private roadway, which they have stated that they have achieved that permission. The condition currently reads that the pedestrian connectivity shall provide a safe, walkable route from all dwelling units and shall include a pedestrian crossing of Town Center Drive, provided that that crossing is permitted. The crossing is also shown on the concept plan, and you can see that boxed in red there, which creates that connectivity to existing sidewalk infrastructure within the property. Impacts to adjacent property, it is surrounded by commercial development on three sides and single-family residential on the southern side in Augusta County. A Class B buffer is required per ordinance between commercial and residential uses. That buffer is 15 feet wide and contains one evergreen tree, one canopy tree, two under-story trees, and 16 shrubs per 100 linear feet. Staff early on discussed with the applicant and recommended that the Class B buffer also be provided along the boundary with the county, and that has been shown on the concept plan that they have proposed to develop in general conformance with. The maximum building height in your highway business district is 50 feet, but Section 98-2.6.4 does allow for those area and dimensional standards to be set during the CUP process, which would include building height. So when we originally discussed that 50-foot maximum height with the applicant, you know, they noted that they could do a flat-roof building but would prefer to do the one that has been submitted and shown with the elevations. So they have proposed a maximum building height of 64 feet 10 inches. Staff does note that that is more aesthetically pleasing than a flat roof and could help hide mechanical equipment, and the applicant did propose limiting the building height to that specific number, and you can see that that's at the highest-most point, but this would be kind of the varied roof design that was submitted as their exterior elevation and would be part of the conditions, and this is just showing it from another angle. Public water and sewer is available at the property, however, water and sewer requirements and demands would be estimated during that site plan review. The site is appealing for multi-family residential development because of its proximity to the interstate, transit, restaurants, and shopping. It is a unique site in the fact that Town Center Drive is private, so other than the entrance on the public road, any entrance on Town Center Drive does require approval from that private entity, and so there are some sensitivities there in the types of uses that they may or may not want to locate at that, adjacent to other competing businesses. The development will provide interconnectivity between the parcels to help distribute the traffic, and then also pedestrian accommodations, so that people have safe access to the surrounding amenities. Staff and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the application with the following conditions, one being that the development would be developed in general conformance with the site plan or the conceptual layout plan that has been shown this evening, that pedestrian connectivity would be provided, that the building elevations would be in general conformance with the materials and architectural styles that were submitted as part of their application, that the building height would not exceed the maximum of 64 feet 10 inches as depicted on the elevations, that the property would be divided, subdivided in general conformance with that submitted concept plan, which shows the three out parcels for business development. Six notes that the entrances shown on the concept plan are for conceptual purposes only, and that approval of the conditional use permit would not necessitate approval of those entrances, that the entrances will be evaluated and approved through the site plan process as appropriate with the appropriate agencies, and then lastly, that the maximum number of residential units not exceed the 252 that are proposed. The applicant also provided this rendering that again shows kind of the materials and roof elevations that are proposed. That's all I have, unless you have any questions, and the applicant is here to speak to the request.
Any questions?
Just if you could go back to the slide about the, what was VDOT's opinion on the entrances? I read it differently, and then you hop to the next slide. Okay, so is that a first?
And the applicant may be able to speak to that more. They did meet with VDOT, and we did receive an email from the Harrisonburg residency that identified that information after their meeting, but I was not privy to that meeting, so they might have more information.
Yeah, I think my questions are more along the- Yeah, I think my questions are more along the lines of, like I said at the last meeting, was the, for folks leaving to head back to Stewart's Draft, or if they want to head south on 340 and make a left onto Lad, the only way that they can do that presently is going through the apartment complex to a full-access, the only full-access at present, opposite the McDonald's and the oil change facility. And a concern I have with that is that absence, appreciate the concept of addressing site entrances at site plan, but the provision for physical infrastructure and the cost associated with physical infrastructure, whether that's a traffic light on Rossar at the principal intersection, if nearly three acres of commercial development not yet identified or for development, or an internal traffic-controlled intersection at the full-access opposite McDonald's and the oil change facility. If those aren't realized, I guess my reservation and concern is that of the ability to require capital investment in intersection infrastructure as a result of site plan, given the monetary cost to that. So it seems to me that the conditional use process is sort of a rezoning is the tool which you sort of identify that and memorialize that as part of the conditional use permit.
So it is a bit different in that it is a conditional use permit request. With the rezoning, and I would be interested in what we, what traffic impact could be required, based on the fact that the entire property is currently zoned highway business, and kind of what that changing, you know, use categories and traffic impact may be if it were to be like a multifamily rezoning, since it is instead a conditional use permit.
Well, they don't have a commercial entrance on Rossar, so they'd have to come for a commercial entrance permit, which would require anything and everything. Whereas, that's why I'm saying memorializing it now on Rossar in a partial-access standpoint. You know, you get a, you know, hopefully, a very successful and commercial out parcel fronting Rossar. Again, the only way for anybody from Stewart's Draft or, you know, looping back around Lad Road, the only way you can do that is you got to go through a private road, well, through a new 252-unit apartment complex, through their streets, through their parking lot, to a arguably inadequate two-lane facility, one lane in each direction, on a private road at Town Center Lane. So I think just memorializing it in some way is, I was kind of hoping to hear that a little bit more. And the other, the other aspect is not to belabor, but understand that following the Planning Commission's action, that the, that there are these qualifiers for pedestrian access, right? And these qualifiers are that if permitted by the Town Center owners or their successors, but understanding that that's all been addressed and good to go, and that's sort of been accommodated. I would be interested in eradicating that qualification in the, you know, potential approval of council, so that we're not, you know, what we agreed to tonight, or whenever we're agreeing to, and we're not setting it up for a different interpretation in the future.
Sure.
That's all I have.
All right. I hereby open the public hearing.
So no one has signed up to speak, but the applicant is present, and I think plans on making a few remarks.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Good evening. Let me start by introducing myself. My name is Daniel Cyrus. I represent the applicant and the developer. I want to start by thanking staff. Everybody's been very helpful throughout this process. We've been working on this for about the past six months now, and we are excited to be before you all this evening. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the information that wasn't covered from the technical and zoning part with staff. And then, Mr. Short, I want to get to some of your questions and maybe have some clarifications for you. So I just want to talk a little bit about who we are and what the project is. So we're based in Virginia. We do mixed-use developments throughout central Virginia. This is our first project in the city of Waynesboro, and we're excited to be here. We're a little bit unique in that we're an owner developer, which means that we actually retain these projects. So the longevity of this is really important to us. And the project that we're proposing here, the CUP, is just for the multifamily portion of this, but this is an overall rendering of the project, which is the same thing that you saw earlier in the line drawing, but just, you know, colorized and a little bit prettier to look at. So the overall project, as we've discussed, is actually a mixed-use project, but the commercial parcels that are in the front there are by right. And so that could all be built today without the need for any CUP approval. I just want to touch on the need for this in the area. You know, we've done numerous market studies throughout the area, and it's quite interesting. So, you know, a healthy rental market usually has about a 5% vacancy rate. This market area actually has about a 0% vacancy rate, which is, which is not really considered a healthy market. Having some vacancies is actually really important to the overall market. So there's a serious need for this. This project's not going to fulfill the whole need, but it is a step towards that. So, Mr. Short, I want to answer some of your questions, and I'll start with maybe what is the easiest one. So to clarify on the pedestrian accommodation, when we, when we put together the suggested conditions for staff, we did not at that time have approval from Waynesboro Town Center for the pedestrian access. But I'm here tonight to represent to you that we do have that approval. I don't know if it's technically possible to revise that condition. If it is, we are by all means perfectly fine with removing the condition, but at the time, we didn't have the approval. That's the way it's written, the way that it is. But like I said, we have the approval now. That's not an issue. And then, based on your comments from the meeting two weeks ago, we did have a meeting with VDOT, with Bill and myself, and were able to work through some of the entrance concerns. So this property, as you all know, is a little bit unique in that Town Center is a, is a private drive. And so that's really why, in my mind, this hasn't developed, because the people that retain control of that private drive really don't want to see a lot of other commercial development that could potentially compete with what they have. So there's been several proposals in the past to develop this that haven't really come to fruition. A big part of that and an issue has been access. But to go back to the access issue, so, you know, in terms of your questions about the capital outlay and the costs associated with these improvements, you know, in our meeting with VDOT, we, it was very clearly presented to us, and we understand the way that it is with all of these projects, that, you know, any infrastructure improvements that are required as a part of our project, that we're going to bear the cost of those. In no way, shape, or form are we expecting anybody else to do that. So we did get, you know, the conceptual approval from VDOT to have a full-access entrance, the first entrance off of Town Center, which primarily will serve the commercial out parcels. And so we believe that that will relieve the need for anybody to drive through the apartment part of the project to access that full-access entrance. And VDOT's thought process on that is, is that, you know, when people are making full-access movements onto the public right-of-way, they want that to be at a controlled, signalized intersection. And you had touched on a few minutes ago about the potential need for traffic signalization at the other entrance on Rossar. We, actually, when we first started on this project, we brought that up with VDOT. That was our desire, because we weren't sure that we were going to get that secondary access off the private road, quite frankly. And because of the spacing requirements for signals, VDOT right-of-way told us that that was not going to be an option here. And that's why they want to, you know, route the traffic in such a way to where the majority of it, especially left-outs, are going to the existing signal. And so that's the reason for them supporting the notion of the full-access entrance there in lieu of the right-in, right-out. So I'm here, if anyone has any questions, happy to answer any other questions that you all might have, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One quick question for you as a follow-up. So the first entrance that is currently represented as a right-in, right-out could be a full-access. Does that require additional approval from the owners of Town Center?
It does require additional approval from the owners of Town Center, but we have worked with them, and we have secured that approval at this point. So the only thing that, just to be perfectly clear here, the only thing that we are still working through with them are the allowable uses for the commercial out parcels. You know, obviously, they have a sensitivity to their respective businesses, and they basically want to try to prevent anything that they see as competition. And so, you know, it's pretty common in these types of situations for them to require certain uses to not be allowed, right? So there's a Dunkin' Donuts there. So, for example, maybe they don't want somebody else that sells coffee, so on and so forth. So that's the thing that's been kind of unique about this project, since this is a private road, you know, it's kind of something you have to address. And that's why we looked at the light first, quite frankly, because we were hoping to not need that access, but because of the spacing, that just wasn't an option.
And then, related to the apartment complex itself, is the internal roads, those would all be private as well?
Correct, yes. The internal roads would be private.
Okay. That's all I have.
I got one, one question.
Yes, sir.
I came to the Planning Commission meeting when you presented then, and I know there was a family there who had asked you, I went back and did a little homework, and I think it's the same company with Cottonwood Manor, where there was some erosion and sediment issues, where there was a stop-work order for that local development. That was Thomas Builders. So I just want to make sure that, I know those folks live in the county, but they're neighbors, and I just wanted to see if you've talked to them, if, what the conversation was, what the resolution was, and what, what measures you all have taken, because that area down there does get a lot of water and good storms. And as they said during that night, it runs through there like a river.
Sure.
So I was just wanting to make sure that you talked to them, what that was about, how that resolved.
Sure.
And what plans you've taken to make sure that that doesn't happen up here.
Sure.
On this property.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that, yes. So I had a conversation with them the night of Planning Commission. We had a very good conversation. They, I think their primary concern, you know, was what their view would look like from their property. I think they understood that, you know, at some point, that property would develop. We talked a lot about the landscape buffer that, as Ms. Tate noted, is part of our plan, but technically, since it's a county property, it's not required by the zoning ordinance. However, we've shown it, and since our plan and part of our conditions is general conformance, it will be required with this project. They were very happy to hear that. We talked about their property. We talked about, you know, the fact that naturally, right now, the stormwater runs to that area. And, you know, certainly with, we do a lot of these projects throughout the state of Virginia. So, you know, as is the way with different things in relation to your comment about the project that we have at Cotton Town Manor, yes, we had some issues there with some residences. Those were actually houses that we actually built. And so when that happened was actually a couple of years ago during a 100-year storm event. You know, typical stormwater and ENS measures are designed for a certain-size event. You know, certain times, you know, like, like anything in life, there are things that happen that are outside of your control, and that's really what that was. You know, we're, I mentioned the fact that we own and retain these projects. We're also a little bit different in that we actually perform the site work, and we actually have a general contracting arm of our business. That's what my background is. I just said that to say, you know, we're not, you know, in here tonight and then never back up here. You know, we're a part of these projects from the beginning to the end. So, yeah, I was very happy to speak with them, and I think, I don't want to speak for them, but they seem very comfortable. They have all my contact information, and I told them if they ever have any issues, to feel free to give me a call.
Yeah, I wasn't saying that to condemn you for one incident.
No problem.
I just, I want to look out for our neighbors and...
Yes, sir. No, I didn't, didn't mean to, didn't mean to imply that you did. I just wanted to say, you know...
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Is anyone else signed up to speak? Mr. Hamm?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I hereby close the public hearing. This ordinance was introduced, seconded, and discussed at the previous meeting, and unless there is additional discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor of adopting the ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow multifamily buildings in the HB Highway District at 651 Town Center Drive, tax map number 60-1-56B, and the rear portion of 150 P Buckley Moss Drive, tax map number 59-1-1, portion, Waynesboro, Virginia, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that ordinance passes. Five to zero. Item 12 is to receive a staff report and consider introducing an ordinance granting a conditional use permit application by Kimberly Rock Miller to allow a manufactured home in the RG5 General Residential District at 1722 Third Street, tax map parcel number And Ms. Tate will call on you again.
So this is another conditional use permit request at 1722 Third Street. I won't go into how we evaluate conditional use permits, because I think we've done that enough this evening. The location of the property, you can see the star represents its location on Third Street, kind of near the intersection of Third Street and Malcolm Avenue. So our ordinance does permit the placement of manufactured homes in the RG5, our General Residential District, but by a conditional use permit only. You can see here, the parcel is outlined in blue, and the parcel is currently vacant. The comprehensive plan identifies the area for medium-density residential. The zoning does allow manufactured homes by a conditional use permit. The requirement is that the lot size be at least 5,000 square feet, and the subject lot is over that, 6,250 square feet. The section of the zoning ordinance that permits manufactured homes states that they be on a full foundation or completely skirted by materials approved by the building official, be set up and tied down in accordance with the standard set by the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code, and that the wheels, axles, tongue, towing apparatus, and transporting lights be removed prior to final installation. This section of our ordinance requires that all single-family homes and duplexes have a primary facade and entrance parallel to the street from which the front setback is marked. So narrow lots makes that placement, that parallel placement of a traditional manufactured home prohibitive. But the applicant did identify a unit with the primary facade on the narrow end, so that permits that perpendicular placement. And here are some pictures that kind of represent what that looks like. This shows the lot, so that's, you know, the existing trees there, but in between those two homes is where the placement and where this specific lot is. And this just shows it from a little bit of a different angle. So staff notes in the staff report that this block of Third Street contains a mix of single-family and also manufactured homes. The broader neighborhood contains many manufactured, single- and double-wide homes, mixed in with single-family stick-built homes. The applicant is purchasing a new unit, and its placement will complement the neighboring units and will not detract from the neighborhood. Manufactured homes are an affordable alternative to a traditional stick-built, single-family home, and the applicant is aware of all the other zoning code requirements which have previously been addressed. There has been a planning, a public hearing held at the Planning Commission, and staff in the Planning Commission do recommend approval with no conditions. And the applicant is here, but I don't think that she wishes to speak, so I just wanted you to know.
Are there any questions for Ms. Tate? Okay. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. And do I have a second?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Allen? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? Okay, this ordinance will be the subject of a public hearing and receive final consideration at the September 25th regular business meeting. Thank you, Ms. Tate, for all of those updates. Item 13 is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between Elmore Properties LLC and the City of Waynesboro for the purchase of 230 South Wayne Avenue. Mr. Hamm?
Yes, ma'am. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, Circuit Court judges have communicated the need for additional space to improve the function and security in and around the Circuit courtroom in the Gorsuch Building and the clerk's office, and in the Gorsuch Building generally. Waynesboro Sheriff Chris Johnson also confirms the need for additional space to improve security in the building. In early 2020, Judge Paul Dreyer communicates specifically that the entire second floor of... of the Gorsuch Building should be made available for uses associated with the Circuit Court and building security. In order to fulfill the judge's request, the city's real estate assessor was relocated from Gorsuch Building to 116 South Wayne Avenue, and that relocation occurred in February of 2022. The city's voter registrar was relocated from the Gorsuch Building to the lower floor of the Waynesboro Public Library in August of 2022. The only remaining municipal offices on the second floor of the Gorsuch Building are the building and zoning departments, including property maintenance, which are co-located in a suite of offices. In the spring of 2022, the city initiated a space study to determine space needs for various municipal functions and recommend potential solutions for relocation of the building and zoning functions from Gorsuch. It's important to note that it has been a long-term goal for the municipal leadership to co-locate the community development functions, which include planning, zoning, building permitting, and code enforcement, to a single location, thereby maximizing efficiency, effectiveness, and customer service in those functions. Before the study was completed, the city manager and staff became aware that the property at 230 South Wayne Avenue might be available for purchase. The location is convenient and keeps municipal offices in a fairly compact geography downtown. After performing due diligence and negotiations with the owner, the city has arrived at an agreement for purchase of the building, including specified furniture and fixtures, that price being $1.66 million, with a commitment to close no later than January 2nd, 2024. Obviously, the timing of the closing is dependent on the seller, who's working on a project to construct a new office adjacent to this location. Given the size of the building, which is 8,300 square feet, the purchase price calculates to about $200 per square foot, which compares favorably to new construction costs currently ranging from estimates of $350 to $400 per square foot, not including land, and also compares favorably to estimates for renovation of $200 to $300 per square foot. Our city attorney has prepared and reviewed the purchase agreement. Before counsel considers the matter, I would like to note that, one, for Mr. Elmore and his property LLC, first, we appreciate the fact that he's making a new investment of this building in our community, and also, we'd like to acknowledge and extend appreciation for his cooperation and accommodation as we work through consideration of this opportunity in the due diligence period. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Hamm? No? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Elmore Properties LLC for the purchase of 230 South Wayne Avenue?
I'd like to motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes five to zero. Item 14 is communication, correspondence, and calendar and comments from the city manager.
I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you so much. Item 15 is citizen comments, period?
Mr. Wood, thanks. Sorry.
No one has signed up to speak this evening.
Okay. Well, then, that brings us to Mr. Allen's favorite agenda item. And, thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned.[1787.63]